From our recess now eleven forty-six, back into our regular session and we have our next item, our solar pilot application from ET Capital.
Yes, my name is Matt Christensen, Senior Director of EDC for ET Capital.
And just give us, let us synopsis of what you want to present to us.
At this point, we're presenting a amendment to the pilot program in which we're hoping to move the application from two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen for a twenty year duration on the tax payment for real estate taxes for this. And fortunately-
Not tax abatement, payment in lieu of taxes.
I apologize, I stand corrected. Try to squeeze that one in. My apologies, yes, for in lieu of taxes. So my understanding is that there is an amendment in the process at this time by the county legal department, and so we're looking for approval of that once that document is executed, not only by the county but also by ET Capital.
Are you committed? Okay. Folks on the camera, we did enter a payment in lieu of taxes with, what was the name of the previous company?
Oris.
And it's out there on Missouri and Roberta and some work over there, but that company have transferred ownership to your company, so we took me to, one of the things, the existing agreement with the previous company, so that they can transfer, and we like to clean that up because we need to identify that, for our sake, that person X is transferring, person Y is accepting. And do you have any other details? If you want to expand a little bit more, Dave?
Yeah, so my understanding in talking with Dave is that more or less the document showing the ownership, I believe even the legal description-
Right.
-has been provided.
The things that we're looking at as far as, they have the right to assign this, which they've done, so Oris assigned it to ET, they picked it up, and it's still under the same name, Solar Six LLC, that hasn't changed, the site hasn't changed, the scope of the project hasn't changed, it's still a ten megawatt unit. But what they would be holding is they'd be holding a pilot agreement in the previous soul, and so what I'm recommending for my office, as the assessor, is that we just go ahead and generate a pilot for them and carry forward from this original one with appropriate information on a legal description of where it's at and of the nuances of that way. And also, talking with Jim Bailey, putting the verbiage in, so if they transfer it again, that that transfer will be cleaner and neater and easier to do.
And if I may, I'd like to know that there's pretty much a hundred percent chance that it will be transferred upon COV of the project to the ultimate owner who will hold the EDA in that, so.
Yes. You see, the thing is, if they just assign the original one with that agreement that they have, they have a new entity, but they have an old agreement with the old information on it. And so we're making it so this transition of the, of reassigning it will be more defined.
And so for today's purposes, we're going to, no doubt, I believe, agree to this, but it's going to be, because we don't have it in front of us, on the new appropriate form that this agreement will be constituted on.
Correct.
So that in future changes, it takes into account that in their form.
With working with Mr. Bailey, the fundamentals of this agreement has not changed, it's just some logistics of the description of the will be. And again, I have not, there is a quarter to twelve when I left my office, and I have not heard from Jim yet. As soon as I get that in my hands, I'll be forthright to bring it to you. I think what Matt's trying to, to purr and get from this trip with the late you is to meet with you folks, explain what this project's going to be, what they're going to do, and for you guys to go ahead and inform with this, and in that way, you won't have to come back to another meeting.
Right. So a couple things, Mr. Bailey probably won't respond today because he's on vacation with his family, unless he does it-
Mr. Bailey is supposed to be in the office this afternoon, according to your schedule.
Okay, all right, so maybe he is going to come in this afternoon. Other thing is, is for your talking that going to have an amended so that it's transferred to the next, that gets past developer stage to owner's stage, is, should there be a trigger or whenever that transfer happens, that we as a board agree to that transfer? I know you're trying to make it so it just flows, but do we know if the new one's going to be a legitimate company or not?
Well, here's the thing, there's no provision for that.
I'm sort of asking the board, do we want to make that just automatic, or do we want to have whoever goes and transfers come back before us so that we get appointed with this company in our community?
I should say, there was no provision for that in the original agreement, and so what we're asking is an application to be filed prior to this, and that gives us the information, it kind of peels the onion back, so we know who we're talking to, the contractor, and the estimation of dates, the size of the scope of the project, and so on. And also, there's the provision so that. Now, that's what you're talking about is whether or not you want to accept the new person, and that, in my mind, kind of clouds the ability to say in your agreement that you have the ability to assign it, because most of these solar companies are a packaging company, to put it that way, where they're taking the contractors and their land and owners and marrying it all together and then making it so an investment group can buy in on it, and then they transfer ownership. And we've seen this time and time again, it's just that, I'm sorry, my short tenure, it's just my first one I've bumped into, but it just seemed like it was kind of clumsy, I'm trying to help smooth up the process.
Well, this is all relatively new process, and that's the reason why I asked that question, Dave, is because we've done a couple of pilot contracts and everything, payment in lieu of taxes. Do we know if it's right? Is the amendment right? It's relatively new to us, too. That's the reason why I posed that question to the board, is it, where it really needs to be?
Typically, well, what I've experienced is when you see an ownership transfer, it's after completion of the project. In other words, it's up and running, so we're not dealing with contractors, we're not dealing with people on the ground, we're talking about entities as far as financial groups go. And so I would recommend that you go ahead and leave it so that they can assign it to somewhere else, that gives them the ability to, that makes it marketable for them. In other words, if they don't have that ability, and they get another investor, and they say, you can buy this except for you've got to go to Lake County and get approved by the commissioners, is that what you want to have? That's what you need, is what's going on in that.
If it helps, I mean, the board, I can tell you that we are already in discussions and about to execute a sales agreement with a company by the name of Heelstone. I'll be more than happy to provide that information and the contact as to who more or less will be buying this investment, but as Dave has explained, you know, at this point, ownership in development and construction is by ET Capital, and so, you know, all of our permitting and that will be, we'll have our name on that. So if it's a condition of closeout of the permits, we don't have any issue on that, but if you're setting precedence for those behind us, so to speak, then perhaps it would be, as Dave said, more marketable to allow the leverage or, I guess, the flexibility for a developer to transfer it.
Just to basically talk openly here is, what I get, what I hear from the constituents in the community is, as investor developers come in and these projects are sold, and they get a twenty year payment in lieu of taxes, which most people believe they're getting a break and all this, they want to know, what have we asked for, what are they giving back to the community? And I guess that would just sort of give the trigger if somebody's investing into the property in our community. Are they going to invest into our fire and ambulance, are they going to invest into bike lanes, are they going to invest in whatever? That's what I get from the constituents here is, is as these developers come in and as this ownership comes in, they're getting a break, but what are they, what are they doing for the community? I don't know that that needs to come in in a contractual agreement type thing, but that's why, I don't know why you guys get asked, but I just asked that last week by a local bike person that says that she's asked one of the other companies that's looking here to probably go and do for our community. That's the reason why I asked the question of, do we want them to come before us, or we can ask them, how are you going to be a player in that community? How are you going to be a partner?
And that's a fair question and concern by the community. Obviously, as a developer, how we're trying to give back is more or less higher than local labor force, or, you know, based on the duration of the project, we've got, you know, people coming into town and utilizing services and hotels and whatnot, adding to the economy there. I think that, in my experience and in my opinion, the more attractive that the board can make the community, you know, solar or renewable energy friendly, and my understanding is that, buddy, I've talked to, the board has been extremely helpful and, you know, flexible on that. But again, the more attractive you can make the community in bringing in that industry, then I think you'll find the industry in itself will start providing more to other aspects, you know, other community affairs and that. Again, in my, in my past, I purchased fire engines, we've done park improvements, you know, things like that, so.
And if you don't have the opportunity to ask, a lot of times, investors have a budget line just to help with communities, and that's why I'm here, commissioners, is that opportunity. I don't know if through that contract is the right place to make them come before us on the amendment or on the transfer of it or not, that most people say, well, they're going to be a part of our community, guaranteed twenty years, payment in lieu of taxes, but the short-term jobs and all that's all done, or are they, what else are they contributing to the community?
If I may suggest to the board, I mean, one, you know, tool to use is, and I apologize, I haven't, I have a short tenure with ET Capital as well, about two and a half weeks, but again, on my experience with other projects, is that in the conditional use permit, a lot of times, communities will ask for a job fair to, you know, bring those entities like myself in to not only communicate to the community what we're doing, perhaps how we may disrupt the community for a short period of time and that, but at the same time, how we're going to give back, and then, again, recruiting local labor force and that. With solar technology, there's very little operations and maintenance afterwards, but, so unfortunately, we're not hiring a large group, but there are services that will still need to be required over the next twenty years in terms of those operations and maintenance, and they very well employ, you know, half a dozen people on a small project like this. Now, again, the more attractive the community is to the developers and renewable energy friendly, then I can easily see us adding more and more solar to the area and therefore it just grows.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from. They do put a lot in during construction and with them, I would be hesitant to require that of whoever you sell it to, but it'd be nice to have them just come and introduce themselves, so for, one of the biggest questions as far as, are they going to help with the back lane, back lane, my question would be, what's kind of going to do with the seventy thousand dollars a year for the back lane?
Right.
Well, it's distributed through the taxing district, so we don't, we don't get that option as board commissioners.
Well, we get twenty, twenty-six percent off.
Yeah.
You don't pay much to spend money.
Well, I think that the point that Commissioner Winters is making is a good one, we've had those discussions on some of the other developments where they put in, you know, sheds for the four-H groups, you know, that don't, some of the students or young people don't have, you know, the ability to have farm animals at their places or where they live, if it's in town, et cetera. I think what you're bringing up on our part, I don't think we can get there today, but I think we can flush it out going forward as to how we want to handle that, because most of the companies want to be considered part of the community.
Oh, without, yeah.
And if we have some specific needs that we can help identify ahead of time, I have to believe that, you know, in an agreement or in the process, we can probably get there because they don't know necessarily, we don't know coming in the first time probably ever in Lake County, you know, what our needs might be, that the company could greatly help, you know, with the contribution here or there, or something they do, so.
So on this aspect, as I mentioned earlier, it'd be nice to have whoever the next company is, as common, I get acquainted, and then we can have, you know, community discussions.
So for the agreement that you're seeking today for us to sign the transfer of this over to, I'll turn to Dave, how would we accomplish that in this amended agreement we're working on?
Well, first of all, they have a, they've gone through the process of the original agreement, so it's been reassigned to them, and they've jumped through the hoops, and they've satisfied Jim Bailey, so they have the ability to do that. And he's asking for a year, to modify the year exchange, to go out another year, starting in seventeen to go to thirty-seven, which is in the best interest of their investors and so on. And I totally get that, because the project's been put off a delay of a year, Oris didn't come through for one reason or the other, and now ET is stepping up the bat to do it. And they've already cleared ground, they've got an approach punched in, and like I said, all this other stuff. So what would probably be the most conducive is to keep Matt coming back and prolonging the process till the next meeting, is as soon as we get this document done, we can electronically send it to them, they can get signed, back, sign off on it, they'll have their finished copy, and they can move forward and get with their investors and so on, because that's, that's their concern, I believe, is they're trying to get that, this is one link of the chain they don't have tied up completely in this tax bill, and their money, people are very interested in that, they're getting ready to spend a lot of money. So times of the essence, and that's, talking with Jan, who I've been speaking with now for almost sixty days, that's been her big push, and how quickly we can get this to go through, and so they, they in a timely manner have done everything I've asked them to do, and now it came time to come to this meeting. It's just, I feel bad that I didn't follow through with Jim Bailey, make sure we can have this document today, so if you guys can arrange it so that we can sign these signs, transfer it electronically and get back to them, that would be probably in everybody's best interest.
With the caveat that I personally will not only introduce Heelstone, the company and that, to yourselves, but I'll be more than happy to work with the commissioning, the board and your team to share my experience with other counties and that, and how we've interjected or introduced ourselves to the community, and then also other ways that we've helped the community, whether it be through the public services or the school or training, whatever it may be, so.
So what sounds like times of the essence, do you need this by a certain time?
It is, it's one of the last binding documents that we need in order to finalize the sale agreement and then also finalize our financing in order for us to start construction. We are scheduled, although our construction schedule is kind of wavering right now, we're looking at either the end of this month or perhaps mid of August to start construction. I actually have surveyors out there today doing the final archaeological study, and so, you know, we're more or less ready to go.
Most all that's disturbed ground, a lot of the superfund cleanup, we still have to do.
We still have to do those, there's still those requirements, you know, through the state.
I don't know exactly where it all applies, but most that's been dug up, six feet down, whatever it was during the superfund cleanup.
Well, then unfortunately, we won't find anything that constrains us.
Well, there might be partials that was out of it that you have.
This project lies just north of Missouri, and there is an empty field, but if you were to drive down Rabbit Hill Road and look to the right, you'll see where they've, they've cleared the brush, you can see, you'll see the survey stakes out there, and the road approach comes straight off of Roberta, and it continues through those green gates, and you'll see where the, some, the power company's put in some holes out there for the transmitter lines, but it's, the tax lot, there's a series of tax lots where the old housing development was going to go, it's north of that, and so it's going to be a good location, and you're right, it's an old tailing site.
So Essence is this payment in lieu of taxes. What we have is with Oris, the sixteenth of March two thousand sixteen, we need to do some edits on this and put it in the guy's name-
No, it was our best guess.
And get it to you, same as we-
Right, and then we'll execute it and get it back, I assume, to Dave, to yourself, or does it-
What I'm doing is Denise is their assistant, and she typically is the person who's been in the loop on this, and she's handed me this project, so I guess I can go ahead and stay in that position. So I'll work with Jim Bailey, get the document, and get with the commissioners, and make sure that it changes to their-
Well, the ones before had come through the planning, had been presented to us, this is in the urban growth boundaries within the city limits.
This has already gone through planning and all other stuff.
So this one's a little bit more unique, isn't it all in the city limits, or just urban growth boundary?
Urban growth boundary.
Just urban growth boundary?
Yeah, and that's already, they've, Oris has already gone through that process, so we're beyond that.
On to payment in lieu of taxes.
So it's just a matter of-
Change in ownership?
Just a matter of changing the ownership and then creating a document with a timeframe and work with them.
Yeah, it has, or it's transferable, but you're recommending doing a whole new one because of, okay.
New original document.
Let's get it done.
Yeah, on item number eleven, assignment, the company has the right to assign, transfer, apply its rights under this agreement in its sole discretion, okay? So that's, that's an item number eleven on the second page, and that's an agreement that we've already all signed on, and-
I think what we have before us, Dave, is just simply the agreement.
This is, this is a copy, I'm looking at the original one that Oris signed, and that's what's stemming this meeting today.
Right.
Though we, I don't have that.
Well, I think I've got two copies of it. So basically, this is, this is with them, what's happening is, they're going to be completed in the fourth quarter of sixteen, and no later, December thirty-first, they're going to have information done, so there's default on those two things. But also in here, on item number eleven, under assignment, that's what we have, this is what Jim Bailey and I are talking about, trying to tidy up and put some more information on, because basically, it doesn't give any information on how this process is to occur.
Or ownership.
So in other words, Oris is giving this, this agreement to ET, but ET's name's not even on it, not even mentioned, won't be mentioned on it, so, go ahead.
Well, you're taking care of that with this new document.
Right.
So we're mixing and combining things here today, but for that, we want to move forward with the approval of this.
So I'll make a motion to enter into a new and current agreement to run, starting, will start December of seventeen, correct?
Correct.
And for the dates to be appropriate as stated, and that assignment will have some verbiage change contingent upon Mr. Bailey's review?
Yes, I mean, December thirty-first, if you start a date on.
Okay, and that's between Lake County and-
It's ET Capital.
It's still going to be all solar, six LLC, but-
Okay, so moved to approve with those amendments or not amendments, granting with those dates and with the contingent upon legal counsel addition on assignment and verbiage.
It's been moved in seconded to-
Thank you guys for working with us.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate this agreement, as stated, do we have any other discussion?
The agreement is a payment in lieu of taxes agreement, granting from the old company to the new company.
This is a brand new one, this is a brand new-
ET Capital.
Yes.
The only question I have is, in order for this new contract to be written, can I bring it to each one of you and have you look at, review it for your approval, or does this have to go before another meeting?
No, we'll approve the contingent upon that, and so the counsel bring it in this, and we'll get it going.
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead, but when you do get it, because you and I have discussed many different things, but Jim will work on it, so I'd like to be sure that that's the deal.
Ken and I and Jim Bailey have been working on some of the changes, pretty subtle stuff.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the timeframe, we have a start date, which is December thirty-one?
Correct.
Yeah, as soon as we get the little edits done, get it signed, send it electronically to you guys, you approve it, and send it back to us.
For your signature.
Matt, thank you for coming today and offered our normal meetings, we have a work session, you make the decision the next day with the Fourth of July, it's a little bit different, but if you have a company that wants to come in and do a presentation to us, when our administrative assistant is back, Denise, have to get on agenda, and work sessions are a great time to-
Afternoon discussion.
Yeah, get some updates and anything, you know, just, it helps get it out to the community.
We'll have it out, yeah, we will, our desire is to be as transparent as we can be and share not only construction schedules and, you know, have county inspectors come out to the site prior, so that their expectations are decided right then and there.
The biggest thing I can stress is neighbors, always visit with the neighbors, talk with the neighbors, adjacent landowners, that's probably the most, and you know that, obviously, that's most important.
Yeah, and we've always contacted them prior to, to know what was going on, but I'd be more than happy to work, you know, with the county to, you know, ideas, you know, from the developer's perspective on how we can, you know, better integrate ourselves into the county and the community.
Because this hasn't been annexed into the city yet, I know there was talk when Oris was there.
That's a whole new deal, oh, it's an urban growth boundary, that's all I can tell you, I'm not sure what, and when they did, when they did the last time in that area, they cherry picked, in other words, instead of taking a large block, they kind of said, you want to be in, or you want to be out, and I said, no, I don't want, I don't want to pay the taxes, yeah, I want the city water, and it's, I have a colorful tax code area map now.
Yeah, that was many years ago, but if you want the services from the town, there's irrevocable consent annexation, so water and sewer are generally needed at a solar site, but then there's annexation comes at that time.
Yeah, in some cases, water is needed for washing modules and that, but other than that, that would be very minimal.
So if you, you can also get on the agenda to visit with the town at any time also.
Perfect.
They're the ones that would supply those services.
Okay. Well, again, I want to thank the commission, you know, for being patient, and I, again, apologize for being late, and I thank you for making time.
Thank you for the long drive.
Actually, we'll expedite this in a timely fashion.
We expedite this in a timely fashion as soon as we get the edits. Dave will be the primary contractor.
I'll just have you and continue to, we'll spring them off this morning.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dave. Thank you.
So our last item will be our laser updates.
I don't know who they, I have vacation for a week. I have nothing.
Vision?
Very low. Just relaxing. You have a heavy workload there going on? Yeah, a lot of fam, a lot of family and everything, so, yeah. If you want something, I can say the Fourth of July celebration at the fairgrounds was a hit, tough trucks and fireworks afterwards. There was several people there at the fairgrounds. And I guess the afternoon, we were able to take all the family and participate in that. That's what we done for them.
How did the prep come along?
It, it came off pretty good. I know they sold over three hundred tickets, I believe, for it.
A good crowd participation.
It was, it was, for the first one in the arena, it was pretty good. It was pretty good. They talk like they're going to build on it, the announcer anyways, and that group that wanted to do it, the tough truck group. So had locals in there. They had some from out of town in there. It was entertaining.
And the Albert Howard came and stayed in a motel and they had a restaurant.
And I think they took the money too.
That's okay. As far as the Fourth of July, I'll toss in, I was asked to, been asked a couple of years come up and watch the parade in Christmas Valley. I was able to make the parade this year. Last year, I just barely missed it. And fireworks up there was even better than last year. So you covered, Lakeview covered Christmas Valley this year. Other things, fiber to Pacey. Going through USAC, USAC is a contracted company of FCC to administer away. They threw us a college ball a couple of months ago. And moved the termination deadline date from September thirtieth up to June thirtieth. And I took it because they're long winter, so we can't do it. So my thanks to Sarah, Sarah's in the ESD building. We was able to get a congressional delegation to have a champion to USAC. And they gave extension to it in September. So I should be able to get that fiber to Pacey.
Very good.
The other thing that Sarah is working on is fiber to A.D.L. plus. That's been submitted to USAC, but we will await a response. It's all competitive. Also on community college, the Commissioner Shout, the meeting you mentioned you was having a hand. Get some ORAs, ORS on community and kind of sounded the same discussion with the effort he's exhausted. It'd nice to have all one community college. But they're working with Allen Parks, we mentioned it to you when we were in Fort Rock. We're working with, trying to work with the community college up there to get the transfer. But, and also with the prison out here, I've spoken with Heidi Stewart of the correction party. Got her hooked up with Roberto. And their biggest concern is budget. What they got is no administrative cost to trust of ID. But since they get their budget squared away, we need to revisit with Heidi. You'd like to take that on permission?
Yeah, that, that would be fine because what I found in my discussions with Steve Brown as well as Dr. Gutierrez is when Steve talks about no administrative cost and that the prison only has to pay for the services of the educator out there. I said, well, what about the contract itself? And that's the missing link is that Snake River facility and others with Treasure Valley, no one even knows what the contract amount is. And I said, well, we should at least ask the question, how much are you charging for the services here? Because that may be a sizable enough sum that there wouldn't become an administrative charge to, to the local department of corrections. But the community college, KCC, might have a big enough pot of money to provide not only that service, but to expand on that.
When I hooked up Roberto with Heidi, I assumed that Roberto was going to ask the question, but apparently not.
No, it was just kind of like, this doesn't look doable because we've got to charge something. And that was about, I don't want to say that was the end of the discussion, but no one asked the bigger question. How much is TBCC getting from the state to provide that? Does, you know, the fact that our local DOC isn't paying it, that's immaterial. The state's paying it on their behalf.
Over there.
Over there. So, so, yeah, I'll, I'll continue to work on, on that side of things. And I'm really glad, you know, when I talked to Alan two years ago on this, there was no interest at that time. And I'm glad that we're starting to move down the road of asking questions with the ORAs and the ORSs that allow for this to happen, a change in boundary, allow for perhaps the change in where those, those taxes that are collected end up going, that one of the key components is that everybody feels like they're not harmed. So COCC isn't harmed, if the community up there doesn't feel like they're harmed and, and KCC in this case, feels like it wouldn't harm them, it's a match made in heaven clearly. So, yeah.
We're waiting on a gentleman by the name of Patrick Crane to get back to us. He's with ATCC and the ORSs and ORAs and spell out the process. But he's saying, this Patrick guy said, with ATCC, Power Education Coordination Committee, is a relatively new organization that coordinate community college boundaries. And they said, well, we can have a deal with extracting a part, even though it's spelled out. But, so he's been busy with Lex Flavestase and maybe should we get back to this. But Alan and Alan are scheduled to revisit with HCC president, surely, because chiefs don't have a chance with the board of directors. That's a key, key component out there. If they are agreeable, it makes it a lot easier.
Well, they say in that ORS or OAR or whatever it is, Dan was sharing that with me. And I asked her to kind of look it up to see what the process was. That board, it looks like to me, if there's no, if all the other requirements are met relative to the harm or the value and everyone wants an agreement, they can do that more or less administratively. It doesn't have, it's not voted on, it's not anything.
There are two points I'm voting on. One is if the entity, community college, has no part. But then if it's not, they had to have public hearings, if it's not a major citizen component. If there is, it goes to a law.
Yeah.
If COCC says no, it goes to a law. I'm trying to stay away from that.
Yep. I agree with Alan.
I thought one other thing, sorry.
Oh, that's all right.
Last Thursday, I did stay and go to the DEQ hearing on our local landfill exemption to there. Alyssa Drewback, Joe Gingrich and Lee Huckins was there. We had no public show up. The landfill manager, Kevin Hawk, and his wife were here. He was here representing the county, so I guess his wife would be the only public that showed up. So there was no public comments, no opposition or anything. And so that part of the process is there, so it moves right on down the line. I can't remember the timeframe. I think latter part of July, there's another trigger timeframe. So that was very positive. As they say, DEQ on the landfill side of it, whenever it's something to help the community like this, they very rarely get participation, so it was nice to see that that's moving forward.
Kevin's wife didn't object?
She did not object at all. So anyways, sorry, I forgot to report on that. I didn't know if anybody had let you guys know because I was off on Friday.
That day was busy at Fort, so I was.
So that's very positive.
So just a quick update. I got a copy this morning. I haven't had a chance to read it. But our state legislature over the weekend, it wrote a little bit in Oregon Live. They're, they either have voted and approved it, but it's that funding package on, on the highway funding in the taxation.
Transportation.
Transportation package, but the gas tax. And so I'll try and break any of that down because quite frankly, I don't know what all the figures are. But it's over a period of a few years. I think it's a seven-year plan. But it should be beneficial to Lake County for funding going forward, but just don't know. We'll know, we'll know more about it by the next meeting to talk about it. And then just some forest health legislation that's worked its way through the House. There's been a lot of discussion on SRS. And SRS is embedded in this new forest health legislation, but it's more on the rules on Title III. It isn't on the funding and the retroactive funding of secure roll schools. But Title III under the proposal will have a lot more latitude to have pre-preparation, training, equipment, et cetera, for search and rescue, the primary user of Title III. It'll still have the component of the community wildfire protection plans. But they heard us, they were waiting for a vehicle to put this into, the changes. Because in past reauthorizations, they said, if you do anything different, we're not going to vote for it. And that anything different was the rules around Title III. So this is separate in that this forest health legislation that they're trying to move forward, this is a rider to that and it'll give us that freedom. And then on the heels of it, at least on the Senate side, they intend to still try and get a retroactive approval of SRS for two years, which will include this last year that we didn't get. I don't know how it's going to work yet, but we're still hopeful that Senator Wyden is, Representative Grayfoe of Idaho is, is working on this for Senator Grayfoe, as well as Senator Wyden and many others. We've got quite a few people that have signed on to it. So it's another one of those things, it's a little bleak right now. The details are very lacking. But I'll, I'll try and get more information prior to the next meeting to, to share with you guys. So two things, one, SRS reauthorization along with some, some new forest health language. And quite honestly, the little bit I've read on that, I didn't like as well because the, the forest health, because they were taking away some of the, the tools in the toolbox when it came to the CRs. Not the CRs, but I guess you can help me, the NEPA, the minimum NEPA.
The NEPA, category exclusion.
Yeah, categorical exclusion, the thousand acres or the combination there. There's just some language in there that didn't look as favorable. But they also, I'm glad I stumbled with that a little bit. There's been a big push to get revenue sharing on the stewardship by many counties. And it's also in there. And well, the, the bad part, I think, I mean, good, yes. Good in the sense that apparently there's a lot of forests that have been putting up timber sales and calling them stewardship because they've had high value components. We're used to here where that tool has been used for things that didn't have a lot of value. And the revenue generated was put right back in and it was limited revenue was put right back into the, continue the program with the stewardship authority and the ten-year program will work. And it could be retasked, coupled with some other, you know, the collaborative landscape forest restoration funding, which isn't funded this year, and some other stuff like that. So it's going to hamstring our local units. Counties that have forests that have been getting, I'll say, hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars in revenue generated off their stewardship contracting, that's a whole different. I totally agree with them there, but the bottom line is the language is in there to do revenue sharing on stewardship contracting. So I'll start there.
Too often the agencies with all the stewardships, so like it's going to opposition parties.
Yeah, and unfortunately, there's examples out there, you know, I haven't talked specifically to those agency folks, but the counties, they said they're raking, I mean, they're cutting big timber and getting high value for it and raking in lots of money and not sharing the revenue, just putting it in their bank account. And that's wrong. That is wrong. You know, if they're going to do that, then it needs to be shared revenue. So.
Yes. We've got two other little things. Representative Werner Riscum notified me last Friday that two bills that was in the House, State House, has not been acted on probably yet for this year. Both of them has to do with water, would affect out ranching and farming community. One is putting measurements, beaches or whatever on any of the pumps and other things. I'm not so sure that that's a good or bad idea, but at least it gives some accountability. But that's possibly a debt for this year. And the other one is the, that the yearly fee of one hundred dollars for every well, which is nothing more than lending to the coffers. That's a strong, but.
Was that domestic wells, irrigation wells?
Probably irrigation, but it's been a while since I looked at that bill. It could have been. But I think it was at commercial.
Well, this, this came before our water resources group last year and we were working on that emergency legislation. And that was one of the things, and I said, you know, I didn't favor it, period, but domestic definitely not. To put a taxation essentially on, on those on a annual basis. Yeah.
And I think the fear was they start here and they end up here and it becomes a.
The thing with the fees is that it's incremental. It's just the. But anyway, it appears that those two bills are dead for this year. But the caveat was that it'll be back on for next year. The other thing on the John Calley, Brad Berry's, Tom Calley and others who started the Mustang, Mustang train facility with the GLA asthma, that is looking at play a part of this month originally. I've been playing phone tag with Todd Verst, GLA asthma. But they would really like to postpone that until they get their, they're still constructing the corrals and things. And they would like to put it off till September or something.
So the news release we just received is already dated. But that makes perfect sense for them to delay it until the facility is ready. This is, this is big for the acceptance of all groups.
Oh, yeah.
So I, you got.
Secretary Zanty, I'm sure they'll reach out and uninvite him to join him.
Yes. Well, like I said, I've been playing phone tag with Todd, so I'm not sure where the Bureau is on this.
Well, it, it needs to be fully functional representative of our community.
Have you been able to see it yet?
No, I have not. I was actually sort of anxious. It was the twenty-second, I think, or something like that. I was, but, yeah. But I, I support waiting until it's ready to.
Is that weather and everything else?
Yeah.
A little cooler. Okay. Well, if nothing else, please come to Forest Little Major or Board meeting at twelve thirty-five.